Those riparian buffer, as per NJDEP rules, where the dwelling is located, it will be outside of that riparian zone. And also by demolishing the existing dwelling, we will be able to locate the proposed driveway outside of that riparian buffer. The other two dwellings on the site, on lot 14.01, that dwelling is going to remain. And the second, the third dwelling on the property, which is located on lot 14.03, that dwelling will also be remained. There's no improvements proposed to either lot 14.01 or 14.03. The only construction that's somewhat anticipated would be trying to get an accurate location of where the existing septic systems are on both of those properties. We have checked with the health department. The health department does not have any records as to where the septic systems are. An in-field investigation completed by our office could not find the typical clean-out inspection force that you would normally have with septic systems. What we have done in preparation of this application, for this application, is we've completed source testing on the property. And we have acceptable results and locations to construct a new septic system if necessary for lot 14.01 and a new septic system for lot 14.03, if that's required. The only anticipated DEP approval that we believe would be required for this project is associated with lot 14.01. And that's primarily due to where the septic system is being proposed. It's being proposed within a wetlands transition area. And NJDEP does have a general permit that's available for constructing a construction of a septic system within a wetland transition area. We believe that septic system will meet all of the typical conditions associated with that permit. And that would be an application that would have to be filed pending any action by this board.
How do you plan on building a septic system within the 300-foot stream buffer for the C1?
So the flood hazard area rules does permit construction of a septic system. They'll limit the amount of square footage that can be disturbed, the amount of ground, which is 5,000 square feet for a septic system.
That's flood hazard. Isn't that different from the C1 stuff?
No, so the actual flood plain is the gray area on the map. The septic system is located along the northerly portion of the dwelling. That's not being impacted by any flood plains.
I guess I have a more fundamental question. How did three houses get built on this tract when it's only a one, single-family residential lot?
These red ones are believed to be old, to very old.
I guess I'm just curious about jurisdiction here because isn't this Board of Adjustment?
We're not seeking permission to have multiple principal structures on a single lot. We're here to seek subdivision to address that issue. In fact, this matter was brought to our attention by way of a notice zoning violation for having multiple structures on a single lot. We're not seeking to keep this as a single lot with three residential structures on it. We're trying to address the zoning violation by some division.
That is correct. There is a summons pending for multiple dwellings on the property. It was not, this is just one option. Would have adjusted, it wasn't a certificate of non-conforming use applied for. We have no records of the house. So that's just from the township files.
So there's no record?
No zoning record.
No zoning record that the other two houses that were built at some point?
At some point. And typically when this happens, it's, there's an application for non-conforming use certificate to prove that there's some grandfathering in before 1956. That's been, that's been done in the past in other areas of the township.
Yeah.
Has that been done here, Jeff?
It has to be to the Board of Adjustment, even for the determination.
Yeah, and I would, I would say this, to the extent, and again, I'm not prejudging this application, I'm not suggesting have a porch rule. But to the extent that the board doesn't, this is a make grant, not a shall grant because of the multiple C variances. So the board has no legal obligation to approve this application. It's if the board believes that its concerns are satisfied, it can grant it. If the board was not to grant a relief, then there's no question that there would be a non-conforming use and they would be required to go before the Board of Adjustment. They would have no alternative. They would have to go and seek relief either for pre-existing non-conforming or if they could not need that, they would need to satisfy the
D1.
The D1 variance, you know, proofs. So those would be, those would be the choices. But that, it depends upon the application and how this board proceeds, whether or not the D1 variance is mooted by the relief granted or required.
I'll just do some follow-up questions regarding the lot circles. I guess, are you familiar with our ordinance where it says the lot circles have to be free of all easements and encumbrances, wetlands, road right-of-ways? And how, can you explain where your three lot circles are and if they're encumbered in any way?
Um, so to answer your question, yes, I am aware of the lot circle requirements. However, this particular property, given flood plains, riparian zones, wetlands, we're showing three lot circles. The first circle is located on lot 14.0, starting left to right, on, sorry, right to left, on lot 14.03. This particular lot circle is partly located, located within the C1 riparian zone for the tributary that runs along the easterly part of the property. On lot 14.02, again, this lot circle is also shown, but this circle is partly located within the second tributary that runs through the property. Oh, it's located within that riparian zone. The lot circle is not located within any wetland or transition area. And the third lot circle, on lot 14.01, that lot circle is located within the riparian zone and within the flood plain. It's, the property is encumbered by wetlands, riparian zones, streams, wetland transition areas. It's just not possible to create three lots where the lot circle wouldn't be encumbered.
So how many would you estimate you could draw that would conform, that wouldn't have any of these encumbrances?
Estimating probably just one lot, essentially, between the two riparian zones, between the area that's unencumbered by the riparian zone.
Do you have any direct, or will the estate have to testify about when these structures were built and how they were built? Do you have any, do you have any information that you found in your records while you were researching for this property?
I think we were able, just through aerial photograph, to trace it back, I think, to somewhere in the early 60s or late 50s. But I don't have, there are no permits or documentation that we're aware of that actually indicates when permits were issued for any of the structures.
Are you, when you did your testing for your septic system, the township currently requires and has for a number of years, two soil logs and two permeability tests for each proposed septic area. Is that what you submitted to the board?
So we submitted two soil logs and one permeability test. We are going to have to provide the second permeability test.
Were those, the tests that were done, where they, I noticed on this submission that there was no witness signature? Were they done with witnessing from the township?
Yes.
And they were done for each of the properties where you're identifying septic?
Correct.
Were they, were the tests done for each of the properties and the septics where you believe they will be? Or just over the single property? Technology's great when it works.
Testing was done for each individual lot.
It was, okay.
Correct.
Yeah. I guess I have a little heartburn because in the past, this board has said, unless there's compliance and proof that septic systems can be built on lots, that we hold an application until we get that documentation. So I'm, I'm very concerned about this, given that the testing that was done shows extreme modeling and challenges, to put it mildly. So that's just something I'm going to bring before the board because in the past, we've said, finish your testing and then we can act knowing in good faith that this really will work correctly. I'm just.
And that's only the septic system issues.
Yeah.
Usually we haven't allowed lot circles to have this much.
Yeah.
Except either in the setbacks or in the buffers and all that kind of stuff.
What I can offer relative to the septic system, the testing has been completed in accordance with the state requirements. The only difference between the states and the township's requirement is that we need two permeability tests. The state regulations only require one.
Yeah.
Agreed. It's been acknowledged.
And the ordinance has the right to require more?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just somewhat, I'll put it mildly disappointed that you didn't do the correct testing because this ordinance with the two has been around for years. So, you know, we do it because there are lots, we know that have challenges and we want to make sure that, that, you know, an adequate system can be put in. So, okay.
Could you comment on the, I assume you saw the Environmental Commission report that was attached to Mr. Macarrell's report?
Yeah, because you've covered all the reports.
I'm raising this now because it speaks to these. They've raised some real concerns, so seems to be the appropriate. Okay. I don't know if this mic works. Yeah, it does. Sorry.
So we do have a copy of the Environmental Commission's report. And the comments that they have are under normal circumstances. If we were dealing with a property that didn't have any structures on them, I don't think we would have any issues either trying to create a different development or a different scheme that works. We're essentially trying to create a subdivision to permit or to place each of the existing dwellings on their own respective lot. That is the reason why the lot lines are drawn the way they are. And that's essentially what's driving the variance relief that the advocate is going to be seeking tonight from the board. It's not that we're looking to build something new. There are three existing residences on this property. And we're just trying to create individual lots so it's not having multiple single-family residential dwellings on one property, which is not permitted in the zone. We're not looking to build a new structure. The only new dwelling that's proposed is one that's going to replace an existing structure that's already on the property. And that existing dwelling is going to be in a more conforming location.
But, but wouldn't you agree then, just based upon what you just testified to, that, that the hardships are self-created and therefore it's not appropriate for this board as a matter of law to consider the variance relief? That therein lies the problem in terms of maybe the appropriate relief is a D1 variance before the Board of Adjustment, just based upon what you just, just what you testified to. I think you have just, in your testimony, confirmed why this board should not grant a C1 relief because it was self-created.
So we also have to look at the fact that these properties could be sold in the future. They have to be. Maybe somebody knocks the house down and needs to be able to build in the future. You don't know what's going to happen. They're not going to necessarily own them forever. And it's not locked to just that particular whoever owns them right now. So if we grant all these completely non-conforming things, we're kind of stuck with them for
forever.
Yeah, opportunity here. So I think you might have gone the wrong direction. And it sounds like you needed to get your non-conforming approval for the three houses, for the three structures first.
Are all three lots, are all three dwellings, are they vacant?
Maybe we should have the owner, trustee?
Well, you come right up to this mic here. You can pull it out of the chair.
Or you could go to the one that's standing, gentleman.
You can pull another chair up, sir. Maybe they're all connected.
Okay. How are you? My name is Brad Russo. I'm a, I'm an attorney in Phillipsburg, New Jersey. I have no history with the property. It was owned by the Lipka family, who owned several properties in Raritan and throughout New Jersey. I was court-appointed because of ongoing litigation with the estate and the beneficiaries. So this is my final property. There was about, there was a lot of them, right? So. So when this one got violated for, and I know nothing about land use. I will state that upfront. I don't practice land use. But when this was, early in my tenure, I was served with a non-conforming use. Actually, it was before my tenure. I was given it to it by the previous executrix. And, you know, I'm looking at this for, the first thing I did was talk to the family, right? And some of the distant relatives were like, it was absolutely there before 1956. The problem is, this was during COVID that started. It was very difficult. The only individual who had solid knowledge was, was from like California and was very old. And it was determined that it, it wouldn't be good for him to testify. So I didn't know how else I could possibly prove. I have no attachments to the property. I'm not the owner, you know, I'm trying to do the best to make this, you know, a usable property again. And so, you know, to look at the two buildings that were built and the options being, you know, tear it down or try to get some relief as far as subdivision or that sort, you know, so I hired a land use attorney to handle it. Way back when there was discussions with, with the town and the town attorney and things like that. And, and this was the recommended way. And this is, you know, so this is the path we took. I wouldn't be able to prove based on obviously my own testimony or anyone that I know within the family now that it was pre-existing to 1956. But that's, that's the strong belief as to why these buildings are where they are and why there's no compliance with zone.
Mr. Russo, how many, on the property taxes, how many, how many dwellings are being taxed by, by the township?
I'm not positive the answer to that. I would have to check my records.
Yeah, because, and again, it's, it's not my place to kind of dispense legal advice, but there are, and again, I'm not, I'm not speaking for the board, but I think, you know, there are, there have been various concerns raised with the, the environmental constraints on the property, coupled with the candid testimony of your engineer that this is in essence self-created. Self-created, people are not entitled to relief for their own, for situations that they've created. The land use, the MLUL makes that clear in terms of, now, that doesn't mean that the board can't, can't grant to relief anyway. They can, you know, they can, they can come to their own conclusions, but I'm just stating from a 10,000-foot level. But if there's, if there's been multiple dwellings that property taxes have been paid on since like 1950, say, or there's aerial photographs that can, that can document three structures that predate 1956, you know, you could certainly confer with your planner and engineer. There are multiple ways of proving pre-existing non-conforming without someone who lived in those premises since 1956. If that was the only way to do it, an applicant would in many instances have significant difficulties in providing proof. I'm just again questioning out loud whether this is the proper board to be before for the relief that you need.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. Sure. Sure. So we'll pick it up at quarter two. Ms. Edwards, we'll be back in session, we'll throw it out to you.
Okay. All good? You can hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
So in recognition of the board's concerns and comments about the prospect of a subdivision, we would like to withdraw our application from the planning board and we will reapply. We'll apply to the zoning board for a certificate of non-conformity or in the alternative, a D1 use variance. So we'll apply for alternative relief to the board of adjustment.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah. I could please. Follow up with a letter to the county, that would be great.
Will do.
Thank you.
We'll send a letter.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, before anybody says anything, let's just close the paper.
Why don't, sir, why don't you come on up? We have a person here from the community. And you can come up to the microphone, please, give your name.
Hello, my name is Mark Picard.
And you need to comment on the testimony that was given.
Wait, 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 is this still towards the application?
Yes, this is, this is not a general citizen's.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I live and own a block. Mark Picard, P-I-C-A-R-D. I own and live lot 12, lot 19, which is the lot right behind the ones being discussed. And my only concern moving forward, I see there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of gyrations with this. My only concern is that I don't end up with a dwelling between my house and the street. I just wanted to go on record by saying that. It doesn't show that now, but I know a lot of things are changing. I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen moving forward. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, I don't think we have any other business for this evening. We are adjourned. Thank you.